Call to Health and Safety Committee meeting to order at 6:00 PM. Members present are Steve Young, Mark McKeever, and myself. Chair Dan Wireball has reported that he will be absent this evening. First item is public participation. Any public participation for health and safety. Seeing none, our next item is approval of the minutes from October 6th. Regular Health and Safety Committee meeting, which are in your packet. I'll entertain a motion to approve. Motion by Mr. McKeever, second by Mr. Young. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. That motion carries. Next item is traffic lights. Administration, what do you have for us on that?
Our original plan was to do three areas of traffic lights and crosses. Right, Dylan? And the cost has went up. We removed two of them. We removed Walnut and Marion Lane. I guess there were four. And we want to do Walnut and Mansfield and Hopley and Lucas. And the price came in at $570,000, which we only had budgeted $500,000. Talking to the auditor in Capital Outlay and Street Improvements, we didn't buy any new vehicles this year, so we were going to move $71,000 over to cover the balance of it. So if you've got any other internal questions or more in depth, I'll refer to Dylan.
Of that $70,000, $51,000...
You need to move on.
Oh, sorry. So of that $71,000, $51,000 of that is contingency. So hopefully we don't end up needing that.
Now, what streets were these again?
This will be Walnut and Mansfield and then Hopley, Lucas East intersection.
Now, at Hopley and Lucas, we had done some work previously, and they had the garbage bags over top of the Walk Don't Walk. Is that going to incorporate those?
Yep. Yep, we will be fixing those. Yeah, so originally we had the three intersections. And just from, I believe it was March or April this year until now, prices went up enough on these projects that we had to remove the one intersection.
Is there a plan to kick the other ones into next year, possibly?
Possibly. So what our intention is with this, we are still going to bid the other intersection as an alternate. In case prices do come in a lot lower than what we think, then we'd be able to come back to you guys to get approval and forward on that contract. But the main, the primary bid will just be the two intersections. So do you need anything from us this evening, Jeff?
No, I'm basically just to pass on the information. Because we can, the auditor can move the money within the Capital Outlay to cover the 71. We just wanted to make sure you guys were all aware of it and you were okay with it.
You're not ready to go out to bid yet? We are.
Yeah, we are.
Yeah, we are. If you need to go out to bid, you're not prepared.
Yes, we do. Yes, we do. Yeah. So we do.
Good. We'll go off to the board of town.
Go ahead, Steve.
So the $70,000 that we transferred over was for fleet? Is that what you said?
No, no, no. In the street department, under new vehicles in Capital Outlay, we had budgeted enough for a couple vehicles and some equipment, but we didn't use all of that. So there's like $144,000 sitting there.
Okay.
So the auditor can just transfer it up to the street improvements.
You're not seeing any in the last few months that we may need it for anything new for that? We're looking pretty good on new vehicles and equipment.
Well, they can't get them.
Oh, can't get them at all? I got you.
Yeah. So they were just, Mr. Dunn was just going to put them off for another year.
Okay. Thank you. And so Dylan, what's our not to exceed amount?
So our not to exceed amount is $560,000.
$560 even? And that was for Walnut and Mansfield and then Hopley and Lucas? All right. So I'm asking for a motion to authorize the administration to go out to bid for the streetlight projects at Walnut and Mansfield, as well as Hopley and Lucas with a not to exceed amount of $560,000. And do you need that as an emergency to get the bids placed?
Yes, please.
Okay. So seeking a motion as an emergency not to exceed $560,000 for the streetlight projects at Walnut and Mansfield and Hopley and Lucas.
So moved.
Second. Now, the first by Mr. McKeever and a second by Mr. Young. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. All right, that motion carries. Either of you gentlemen have anything on the open project list you wish to discuss this evening?
No.
No, sir.
Any public participation to wrap up health and safety. Hearing none, we will adjourn at 6:05 PM. Okay, we'll call finance to order at 6:07 PM. Members present, Kevin Myers, Terry Spiegel, and myself as acting chair. Dan Wireball is absent. Okay, public participation.
Vicki Deschawn, 1108 Hillcrest Drive, Bussaras. Before we go any further on the finance, I notice on the agenda, we have finances looking at the ODOT bridge inspection, which is also being looked at by Public Lands and Buildings, traffic lights, which were just addressed by Health and Safety, the Wayne Street sewer separation, which is going to be addressed also by the service, as well as the 2023 OPWC project, also looked at by service. I don't know if some things change since I was the law director's clerk, but I know when there were items referred to committees, we referred them to what we called as the sponsor committee, which I'll just use as reference. Health and Safety Committee would be the sponsor of the traffic lights because traffic lights come under Health and Safety. Then because there was money involved with that, then the finance committee would come into play. So I'm wondering, and I think this has happened before and I just caught it, is if really finance needs to wait until after the various sponsor committees have discussed the project and approved it? Because if you do it this way, finance is approving a project that the sponsor committee hasn't even approved. It's sort of like we're doing it backwards? And I know that's how we did it before. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public participation?
Mr. Chair, could I just make a comment in reference to that?
Yes.
One of the reasons we actually asked for finance to be earlier was so we could discuss the tax credit, tax credit reduction. And in the past, when we've just had appropriations or whatever, we'd do that recess and then come back to finance after the sponsoring committees met. And I would suggest that that's what we would do again, so that you are not doing it backwards.
Okay. Okay. We can do that. Okay. Next item on the agenda is approval of minutes from October 6th.
I'll move to approve. I'll say, I'll say.
Okay. First and second. All those in favor? If there's no other discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Is there any open projects that you want to discuss? We were going to wait for the other items. Go ahead, Erin.
Well, the tax credit, we can't really talk about it. It's not listed. We closed that. It was no longer an open project. We had to bring it back in, and it's not listed as something for the committee for the evening. It's not on your list. It's not an open project. You guys closed it because everybody was upset before, and it had to be brought back in to the committee.
Okay. I can't really understand what you're saying through your mask. Say that again.
It's not the mask.
I can't understand what you're saying.
We closed that. It was no longer in open projects. You guys did that when everybody was so upset about the taxes. It was taken off and had to be re-referred. It was referred the other night, but it is not on your list of things to talk about.
If it was referred, it's still an open project, then?
It was closed out of the open projects from before.
You just stated it was re-referred.
But the other night, somebody said something about bringing it in.
Dan referred it.
The big picture...
Big picture is not listed.
The big picture, they're not going to talk about it tonight anyway. So at the next meeting, somebody can make a motion to refer it and then discuss it at the following council meeting.
Anything on the open projects list that you want to discuss other than what Erin brought up? I'm sorry?
We was going to discuss that, but I guess not.
I was under the impression we were going to do that at a special meeting, not at a regular committee meeting. That was how that discussion was in the past. I would prefer it to be its own meeting because of the gravity of the topic and the probable length of the conversation.
Okay. All right. Well, with that, I will recess. I will recess so that we can reconvene at 6:12.
Buildings Committee, October 20th, 2022.
Calling Public Lands and Buildings to order at 6:14 PM. Members present are Kevin Myers, Brenton Potter, and myself. Ms. Erin Scherik, Chair. Dan Wireball is absent. Do we have any public participation? Seeing none, I'm going to ask about approval of the minutes from October 6th meeting.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Myers, a second by Mr. Wireball. All in favor?
Point of order, it's Mr. Potter.
Oh, I'm so sorry, Mr. Potter.
That's all right.
Okay. First by Myers, second by Potter. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion passes. All right. The ODOT bridge inspection.
Yes. I do the concept part legislation that if you guys approve, when we've been doing our bridge inspection on North Sandusky Avenue for the last, I don't know, seven, eight years that I've been here, and they need a current legislation for them to continue to do the inspection and give us the report of the inspection. And they need the legislation for this year. However, next year, when it comes back around, this is only good for a year. I have the email that they will not need legislation next year. It would just be that we're still going to be opted in, per se. So I just need to do the legislation to let ODOT do the inspection on North Sandusky Avenue, basically for the next four years, is what it comes down to.
Do you have that?
Here.
Can I see that? Please, sorry.
Just the top.
And I do believe she told the legislation from the last time we had to do this.
Yes. Let's...
Pull that, and then he had the second one from what ODOT said.
Okay. So they just need permission to continue inspecting?
Correct.
From the looks of it, they're paying for that as well?
Correct.
Okay. And so we're doing the same paperwork as before? We just have to give legislation?
Well, we might have to modify the old one with what they've sent me this time. Just that would be between the law director and the council clerk to put that together to pass.
Do you have this? Do you need it? So we'll pass it your way?
You need to pull up the report.
I have that still yet. I got you.
Put that with it.
With it?
Yeah.
All right. All right, then. I need a motion for legislation.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
First by Potter, second by Myers. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. All right. So do we have anything on the open projects list? That we need to speak and talk about right now?
Not from you.
Any more public participation? Or any at all? Okay, then I will...
Ms. Chair.
Yes.
Was that as an emergency? Because I do need to get it turned in.
It was not.
It was not as emergency. So now we are going to request if that motion can be...
I will go back and amend my motion to be an emergency.
Okay. So we have a first as an amended motion as an emergency?
Second.
With a second from Mr. Myers. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
All opposed? All right. Motion passed. As amended. Sorry. Okay. And without any public participation, and Public Lands and Buildings at 6:18.
Plating Committee, October... Plating Committee, October 20th, 2022.
I will call plating to order at 6:19 PM. Members present, Kevin Myers, Terry Spiegel, and myself. Chair Dan Wireball is absent. Okay. Any public participation for plating? No one? Approval of minutes from October 6th? Any motion?
Sure.
Second. Okay. I have a first from Terry, a second from Kevin. If there's no other discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. We still have an open project list, and I have not had time to look at it. I'm... If any of you see something that you want to discuss and try to take care of, don't hesitate to bring it up. We'll work on that. Otherwise, any other public participation? None. I will adjourn the meeting at 6:20 PM.
Economic Development Committee, October 20th, 2022.
All right. I'd like to call Economic Development to order at 6:16 PM?
6:21.
6:21.
Oh, 6:21 PM. My computer says 6:15. I watched it. 6:21 PM. All right. If there's any public participation, come up to the podium. Seeing none, we'll move on to the approval of minutes from the October 6th regular Economic Development Committee meeting.
I'll make a motion to accept.
I'll second.
Got a first by McKeever and a second by Ms. Scherik. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Motion passes. Moving on to open projects. I've looked over that I'd like to discuss right now, but if you guys do... No? I don't have any. Okay. We'll allow for public participation once again. Seeing none.
6:22.
We will adjourn at 6:22.
Service Committee, October 20th, 2022.
I would like to call Service Committee to order at 6:23 PM. Members present are Steve Young, Ms. Erin Scherik, Brenton Potter, and myself, Chairman. We'll start out with public participation. Seeing none, we'll get the minutes approved on October 6th. Regular service meeting.
I'll make a motion to accept the minute.
We got a motion by Erin to accept the minutes. Need a second?
Second.
Or approve, sorry.
Second. Mr. Young? Any more discussion on it? If not, vote.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. Wayne Street sewer separation. Jeff?
I'm going to turn it over to Dylan.
Okay.
And I'm sorry.
I'm just going to turn it over to Dylan, and I got a couple numbers that, as he's talking about the project, I'll interject.
All right. So Wayne Avenue sewer separation. We're separating a few catch basins out of the sanitary sewer on Summer Avenue at the intersection of Penn and Wayne, and then taking it south to the existing storm sewer that's there. Current estimate on it is $128,000 with contingency. I don't know. If you want to talk about the numbers first, you want me to explain how we...
Well, you already... I'd go ahead and give him the final numbers, then.
So what we had... Originally, we had planned to do a sewer separation project on Willard. But like many of our projects this year, the prices are just astronomical right now, and it's just not in the budget to do it. So we would like to be able to move the money from the Willard project to this Wayne Avenue project.
We had it in the sewer and drain fund and the stormwater fund, and the budget for $129,125 in each fund, and $258,250 for a total. We were just going to change the Willard Street project over to Wayne Avenue, and we would only be spending about $145,000, $146,000.
Which, let's see, about $17,000 of that was already in the budget. We already did have the engineering and project admin for Wayne Avenue in the budget. So it's really just the 128 of the project plus the contingency.
So basically, you're just transferring the money?
Yep.
Well, we're actually just going to change the project name from Willard Street to Wayne Avenue.
Okay.
I mean, we won't... We'll have $130,000 left.
Okay.
But we need to go out to bid then also.
Yes.
What do you plan on having that done? You want to go out to bid right away on it as soon as you can, or...
We will be ready to go out to bid in the next month and a half.
Okay. Okay. Okay, you heard the information. We need to pass legislation or request legislation and request it as an emergency.
Yeah.
For this project.
Just to have it ready.
Need a motion to do that.
Do you need it as an emergency?
Yes, he does.
Okay.
That's within the next month and a half.
Well, within the next month.
I'll make the motion. I'll make that motion.
Okay. We got a motion by Mr. Potter. Need a second?
I'll say.
Second with Mr. Steve. Any more discussion on it?
I have one question. What... Why pick... I mean, what made the decision between the two? Was one worse than the other, or just one cheaper than the other?
So ultimately, what we're going with is some low-hanging fruit. So current estimate on that Willard project, which we have plans at 95% done, but our current estimate is $610,000. And we had 260 planned, so...
So we're going for the cheaper one of it?
Yes, we're going for the cheaper.
That was my question. I was trying to figure out why... Because there are two separate parts of towns, so it was like blowing my mind.
Yeah, and we're kind of picking off some low-hanging fruit here, getting these little projects done. So we have areas that are completely separated.
And Dylan, correct me if I'm wrong, but...
I think that Wayne Avenue is on Mill and Pave next year, is it not?
Yes, Wayne and Summer are both on Mill and Pave next year.
So we wanted to get it done before we picked.
Perfect, getting it done beforehand versus after.
Yes. Correct.
Okay. Any more questions? Okay, we need to vote on it? Vote on the motion to request legislation on this and have an emergency.
So all in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. 2003, 23 OPWC project. Jeff, you want?
Go ahead, Dylan.
All right.
All right. So 2023 OPWC project. We need legislation to be able to apply for the OPWC funds. The project is Dudley Street reconstruction and sewer replacement. So we are going to be replacing the sanitary sewer. It is in very poor shape. Adding a storm sewer and separating all the catch basins out of the sanitary, and then reconstructing the street after that. So at this time, all we need is to be able to apply for the OPWC funding.
As an emergency?
You want that as an emergency also?
Yes, that...
Okay.
Yes, that needs to be an emergency.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. We got a motion by Ms. Scherik, a second by Mr. Potter. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I will also add, on that project...
We will turn that into the U.S. EPA, and we'll get some credit for that, that we separated.
Good. I need credit. Okay. Anything in the open projects? Anything else from you, Mr. Service Director, or anything? Okay. Seeing that, any more public participation? If not, we will adjourn at 6:30.
The Finance Committee.
Okay. I will call the meeting back to order at 6:31 PM. Okay. As we already heard, for the ODOT bridge inspection, we...
There's no money involved yet.
Okay. So don't... You just have our...
Well, I'm referring to the lottery, but I don't think finance would have to do anything with that.
I don't believe we do. If there's no money, why do we need to do anything? Okay. The traffic lights, we already... Already did those. So the Wayne Street sewer separation and the 2023 OPWC project. As you heard from the meeting, we're talking Wayne for $128,000. And Jeff, we need it... You need money moved, or is it just, it's already there?
It's already there, you said.
No, we're just... It's already in the funds.
Okay.
We just need to change it from Willard Street to Wayne Avenue.
All right. Well, we need, for that one, we need both of them. But first, this one for as an emergency?
So moved.
Second?
I got a question. So we're talking about the sewer separation?
Yes.
Wayne Street. Which was already discussed in Service. The money's already in the funds, so what does this committee have to do? We don't need legislation, do we?
You know, we need to put it out to bid. So we're going to need legislation to go out to bid.
Wouldn't that have come from the sponsoring committee? That's what Mr. Shaw just addressed.
There he did. The money's there.
My point is, this committee doesn't need to do anything with this particular project. If you're not asking...
Yeah, they need to approve the money. Well, yeah, you're right.
She would have to...
The money's already there.
She didn't even ask for the appropriation yet for it.
No. No, but we'll just ever do that.
Okay.
And withdraw my motion.
Okay. Do we have... We have to do the OPWC grant? That doesn't require any money from us right now. You're buying.
Yeah. Not at this time.
Nope. So we don't do nothing.
So we didn't have to reconvene.
Well, you have been approved your October 6th minutes.
Yes, we did.
Yes, we did.
I made the motion, and Terry made the second.
Yes.
Oh, I did not hear that. I'm sorry.
That's all right. We need to do the traffic lights.
Yeah, we need to do traffic lights.
I thought you did.
Well, so again, with the traffic lights...
Oh, no, it was in health and safety.
Health and safety took care of the legislation, but I think...
But there's already money.
Yeah, and it's in the, in the fund already.
That they're going to transfer from the...
Yeah, but in the same fund.
It's just in the same fund, that they're just transferring the money.
So I guess the question is, why were these even referred back to the Finance Committee? That's probably why they were on here, because they were referred.
Well, we covered our bases, so...
I will say, though, to Mr. Shaw's point, when there's things that are referred to multiple committees, I would like to see finance put at the end of the, end of the list for this particular reason.
No problem with me. Okay.
Mr. Sherrick?
Yes.
I don't mean to make it confusing.
But as we passed the traffic lights in service, and it went to finance, we have to approve to go out to bid, do we not?
For the traffic lights, health and safety already made the motion as an emergency to go out to bid, authorizing you to go out to bid.
Yes.
But health and safety only approves the project, they don't approve the money. The money comes from finance. Am I wrong?
We approved, in health and safety, we approved going out to bid. It's not being paid for yet.
And Joyce said she had it in that fund already.
And you already have it, it's already in the budget.
Okay.
In the...
It was already budgeted, just she hadn't mentioned it.
I know, but...
Do we have to refer it to finance to be able to go out for bid, to pay for, to go out to bid?
I'll refer to the law director.
You do that with every project.
Right. Yeah.
Even though it's in the budget, we still have to have finance approve me to go out to bid, not health and safety. They approve the project.
I think we can approve, as we can give our blessing vote, but we're not going to request additional legislation. The legislation request is already made.
Yeah.
By who?
Health and safety.
Health and safety doesn't control the money. Finance does.
The, the request for legislation was to authorize you to go out to bid. It wasn't to pay for the project.
Yeah, but so when you authorize them to go out to bid, it always also says and authorizes the auditor to issue warrant or warrants on said bid. So if you're issuing payment on that bid, I suppose health and safety or finance should also approve those.
So do we have to request additional legislation?
It would all be the same legislation.
Okay. So our motion coming out of this committee would be to jointly approve the same motion that came out of health and safety to approve that not to exceed $560,000 as an emergency, in conjunction with the health and safety request.
Would that be a joint motion?
So you would want to, both the traffic lights and the sewer project? I don't know what the number on the sewer project is.
Sewer project is $128,000. The traffic lights was $560,000.
Right.
And the OPWC grant?
That's just an application.
That's an application, so...
And the ODOT is no money.
Correct. So ODOT, we do not have to.
Right, so I would make a motion that the Finance Committee concurs with health and safety on the traffic light project not to exceed $560,000, as well as concurs with the Service Committee for the Wayne Street sewer separation not to exceed $128,000.
Or should I, should we mention the total bill of 145? He said it was $17,000 for the engineering. The total bill is 145,000. We need to put the total bill, correct?
145,000 for the sewer separation?
Yes.
Okay, so again, I'll reiterate, my motion is to concur with the Health and Safety Committee on the authorization for the administration to go out to bid to exceed $560,000, and then to concur with the Service Committee on the Wayne Street sewer separation project to go out to bid not to exceed $145,000.
I'll serve that.
Okay, if there's no other discussion?
You authorized the auditor to issue warrants on said bids.
Authorizing the warrants by the auditor to pay for said bids.
As an emergency.
And also as an emergency, because it's concurring with the other ones, which those were already done as emergencies.
Thank you.
Do you have a second on that?
I'll serve that.
Okay. All right, if there's no other discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion passed. All right, I will adjourn at 6:39 PM.
Public participation?
Oh, I'm, pardon me, public part, any public participation?
Mr. Shaw, 1108 Hillcrest Drive, U.S.A.R.S. I sent an email to the council clerk, as well as to all of council members today at 4:41 PM concerning the Finance Committee minutes, which I believe are inaccurate. And you'll remember, in your council rules of procedure, that was one of the areas that you changed. In fact, it was Councilman Wireball suggesting, suggestion to alleviate my coming up and asking for changes. It was send an email, and you can send it as early as like five minutes before the meeting. So you had it, what, an hour and 15 minutes before the meeting to look at, but it would appear that since you made no mention when you approved the minutes earlier, that they were being approved as amended, that you approved the actual typed draft minutes that were in documents on demand. Is that correct?
Yeah, I didn't have time to review my email, so I didn't read your email yet.
I didn't get it until I just looked in my email.
Okay, well, then while I'm up here, I will outline then to you, as well as to the public, why I feel the minutes need to be amended. In the minutes, it states new clerk hiring. McKeever made an emergency motion to set the pay of the city clerk $19.50 with a 50 cent increase starting January 1, 2023, retroactive to October 1, 2022, or October 3, 2022. Second by Myers, motion passed by a voice vote. If you'll remember, at the October 11th, 2022 special council meeting, I informed council that at the October 6 Finance Committee meeting, McKeever made a motion as an emergency to start Susan, I'm not even going to try that last name, wages at 1950 with a 50 cent rate increase at the beginning of 2023, pay retroactive once the legislation is passed. I further informed council that discussion was held on the retroactive dates of October 1 and October 3, but no decision was made, and the original motion by McKeever was not amended. Finally, I informed council that the Finance Chairperson Wireball stated he had a motion by McKeever with a second by Myers. However, in my watching and listening to the video recording, you do not hear Myers seconding the motion, nor does the caption on the video recite his seconding the motion. So in light of the above, I feel that the draft minutes that you just approved, they need to be amended to reflect what was truly stated and what occurred at the meeting.
Can you mention that, if I may, Mr. Sherrick? You mentioned that Tuesday night, and I haven't had a chance to go back and watch...
Yeah, October 11th, yeah.
Yeah, but you mentioned that specific moment, and I can recall, I haven't had a chance to go back and watch the video, but I'm going to trust absolutely, you know, if you say you didn't hear it. I recall the discussion, I recall telling Dan I'll second that, and it may have been during discussion when it wasn't picked up on the mics. So I do know that I did cast the second, however, if it wasn't recorded, then that probably needs to be appropriately addressed. In the end, it's a moot point because we, we met again and took care of that.
Tuesday.
It came straight from the council floor.
And that's true.
And bypassed the committee, but...
But you're talking about your October 6 minutes.
Correct.
And this is what the October 6 minutes stated, but that's not what occurred.
Correct.
And because none of this occurred, that was one of the reasons of the piece of legislation that the legislation was held.
Correct.
And then you referred it back to the Finance Committee. I'm just pointing it out. I mean, you choose to do what you want, but again, as I point out, the Ohio Sunshine Law states if your minutes, your minutes need to be accurate. If you know they're not accurate, and you do not make them accurate, then you are in violation of the Ohio Sunshine laws.
So, if I may, help me wade through this here. The amendment to the minutes should state, and I believe it's, you probably stated it in your email, which I haven't looked at yet, but it should state that the, that there was not a second.
I remember you saying...
Correct.
I heard you say it.
It's just odd that it didn't pick up on the microphone, because everything else that you said, because I listened to the meeting, everything you said was picked up.
I do recall looking at him and saying I'll second that.
And even the caption, what you said was picked up, but this wasn't picked up. It's, you know, and, and again. Let's see, how do I want to say this?
So...
I know people get aggravated with my coming here and feel that, you know, I'm coming just to cause problems. That is not my issue at all. If I was wanting to cause problems, I wouldn't bring these airs to your attention, so you have the ability to correct them. I'd just let them go and handle it another way, so I just, I'm trying to help here.
Yeah, so in this instance, where I can recall that I did make the second, and so does Mark, but it wasn't picked up, what's the right answer here?
And according to the Attorney General's Office, the public must be able to hear what is said.
Well, I think we need to amend them to state that, that it was not audible on the recording.
Right. So whatever, whatever occurred, there is an inaudible which led to council going a different way, but yeah, I'll look at those and I haven't seen...
And that then would just be a paper trail that would explain why then you had a second.
Is that something that maybe we can take a look at over the coming days and get it worded correctly, instead of just trying to make it on the fly right now?
Oh, for sure.
And then we can bring it back up and amend it at our next meeting. Susan, if you would put that on the agenda for the next finance meeting, and then, and then we can make sure that, you know, Mr. Gerner has a chance to review and come up with the proper solution for how it should be worded, and then we can, we can make that amendment to those at the next meeting. I think it's the proper course.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. If there's nothing else, I will adjourn at 6:47 PM.